All right, it is 7 o'clock, 7:01 now. We will go ahead and call our August 15th City Council meeting to order. We will observe our traditional moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's fine. Good. All right. We've got several guests that wish to address council this evening. At this time, I'd entertain a motion from City Council that we open the time for public comment. Is there a motion to that effect? A motion by Mr. Thomas is seconded by Mr. Rigger. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, opposed. Public comment time is open. We will begin first with Joe Carrico. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. I'm here tonight representing the Epsom County Firefighters Association. We would like to formally request that the council meet with us and the county commission and any other entities that are involved in the first due fire fee. We believe there are some alternative things that could be done that wouldn't negatively impact the county departments as much as the first due fee will. We would like to request that you will all have a meeting with us before you continue with the first due fire fee.
Wait one more time because it's usually... No, David, there's nothing, so... Thank you, Joe. So, that discussion... Okay. While we have a window of time. So, that discussion piece is not listed on the agenda tonight. There was some discussion last time about the first due fire fee, as you saw in the, I'm sure, in the MyBuckHannon article. But it's not on the agenda this evening. Council is... Council will be meeting here soon with members of our city fire department to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page with them. So, I think perhaps after that meeting, we can talk about, you know, sitting down. We need some dates or some, you know, what everybody's thinking, trying to get everybody together, you all, the county commission, us, trying to make sure that we can coordinate schedules.
That's what we're trying to do. Will that be done before, say, first reading of ordinance?
Do my colleagues on council... Would you... Do my colleagues on council wish to entertain a meeting with who Mr. Carrico is suggesting that we meet with?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I would suggest we throw it at the...
Public safety complex?
Public safety complex.
Your people, or our people, love that, but, you know, it's like... Wherever, I mean, if anyone had involved, if they want to be a public meeting also with that, that's a different...
Okay.
How do you feel about that?
About having a public meeting? I'm fine with it.
So, Theresa, I'll talk to Theresa tomorrow and we'll try to get some dates, some possible dates out there for some, for potential meeting, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is Abigail Wernick.
Members of the town council, I hope you're doing well this evening. I'm here to request that you make a slight adjustment to a proposed policy regarding the event insurance requirement to include small, free, community-based events before accepting it and making a full town ordinance. As you are aware, these events play a crucial role in fostering community spirit, promoting local engagement, and enhancing the quality of life in our town. However, the current event insurance mandate may be a significant barrier for organizers and discourage the hosting of such beneficial gatherings. Small, free, community-based events such as neighborhood picnics, local arts and crafts fairs, community health fairs serve as vital avenues for bringing residents together, building social connections, improving health and wellness, and supporting local businesses. They provide a platform for creative expression, cultural exchange, and communal support. These events are often organized by volunteers and nonprofit groups operating on limited budgets and are intended to be accessible for everyone in our community. Requiring event insurance for these small, free events will impose a financial burden that many organizers cannot bear. The cost of insurance will exceed the budget of such events, which are typically designed to be low-cost or entirely free. This requirement will discourage community groups from organizing events, resulting in fewer opportunities for residents to engage in meaningful local activities. To address this issue, I propose the town council consider amending the waiver language to allow event insurance waivers to include small, free, community-based events. Specifically, I suggest the following criteria for eligibility. The event size and scope should be small scale and should not involve high-risk activities. Free admission: the event should be open free of charge, no entry fees, and no cost to participants. It should be organized by nonprofit organizations or community volunteers with no commercial intent. Benefits of this proposed policy would include encouraging the community engagement. Removing financial barriers will empower more residents and organizations to host events that enhance community cohesion and engagement. It'll support local culture and creativity. It'll facilitate more events. It'll support local artists, musicians, and creators, enriching our town's cultural landscape. It'll foster volunteerism. By reducing financial hurdles, we encourage more individuals to contribute their time and effort to organizing meaningful community events. One area our mayor frequently mentions is troubling in our community, the lack of volunteerism. And this will help enhance the quality of life. A vibrant calendar of free local events improves the overall quality of life for residents and fosters a strong...
Wait a second. Okay.
The Public Works Commission had declined to provide a waiver or waiver system to be put in place for a few months now in response to an event request by Really, Really Free Market. Only have it brought to the council, which continues to exclude small, community-based events. Several supportive community members began petition in response to request the commission recreate a waiver system, which has gathered 242 signatures so far, online and in person, to request that the commission show that they care about the community and the community's opinion about this event insurance requirement and how it will negatively impact our community. By adopting a policy that allows for insurance waivers for small, free, community-based events, we can remove a significant barrier to organizing these valuable gatherings. This adjustment will not only enhance community spirit, but also demonstrate our town's trust and commitment to supporting local initiatives and fostering an inclusive environment for all residents. I urge you all to consider making just that small amendment change before accepting the ordinance.
Thank you. Up next, Heather Schneider.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Schneider, and I'm part of our community. I am here to propose an adjustment to the ordinance you all started discussing at your last meeting on August 1st, City Ordinance Number 470. Thanks in advance for listening to these words. At its best, a city or town is a group of people helping each other by pitching in together. In regards to public parks and city property insurance, people in this town do that. We pitch in together with tax dollars that cover the maintenance and insurance. I'm part of a local gathering called Really, Really Free Market. We've been going for eight years. We are in our ninth year. Our group of members do so much amazing community work. One of the things we do together is invite each other to show up and freely care about each other in person once a season, four times a year. In practice, this looks like Christina, who's here with us tonight, gifting produce from her garden. Shawna, Mary, and a total of four generations of the Anderson family, bringing a variety of sizes and styles of clothes to gift to people. Tom Keely and Kay Almond, both retired pastors, gifting a computer monitor and free jewelry. Daya Masada Wright, freely offering to help community members with simple living wills. Catherine Hasbrook, gifting soap and hygiene products. Lisa Gumm and April Pearson Keating, offering free yoga classes. Bobby Winters, freely and warmly offering her handmade winter hats. The conversations of care we have with each other at these gatherings are another free offering, and those conversations are invaluable. Until this year, we have used Jawbone Park for eight years for our spring, summer, and fall gatherings. We have used Stockard Youth and Community Center for our winter gatherings for eight years. No one is making any money from these gatherings. All the time spent to make them happen is unpaid. No money is exchanged for anything gifted and freely offered. We even pick up litter before we leave the park, and we are always sure to sweep the floors of Stockard before we leave. We everyday people gathering to freely and publicly care about each other, we've been excluded by the way this new ordinance is currently written. Our gatherings have been blocked by the enforcement of unjust policy. I sincerely want to believe that the alienating and exclusionary nature of the proposed ordinance in regards to public parks usage and the other city spaces you all have now included is an oversight. I don't see why city servants would propose such a discriminatory policy other than unintentionally. This must be unintentional oversight. How does this proposed ordinance exclude and alienate people? The proposed ordinance erects an access barrier in the way of everyday people excluding us from being able to freely and publicly gather. Impact is greater than intention. If you don't intend to exclude us from the parks, then you need to know that a discriminatory impact of this current proposed ordinance you're working on is that it places an access barrier in the way of low-income people and people below the poverty line. This ordinance, as it is currently written, is effectively a poverty tax and another pathway to criminalizing poverty. This ordinance is an unnecessary overreach. BuckHannon does not have to function in this unjust way. Y'all, our city councilors and mayor do not need to create biased and unjust impacts on our community. I love encouraging people to use the public parks in free ways to help each other. Now I'll be concerned the city will call the police on them like they did on us July 28th at Stockard Youth and Community Center. What a use of our resources to do that. Our resources should be used to encourage sharing and trust. Instead, we were met with a police officer telling us we could not gather to freely help each other that day at a place we've freely gathered for eight years. Shirley Earl's intentions aren't to exclude low-income community members and community members who are below the poverty line from being able to build community in our city. That is why I believe those of us in those categories must have been unintentionally excluded in the way this ordinance is currently written. We can have a public parks usage policy for everyone. What happens today in this room does not have to be another unfortunate case of everyday people pitching in to pay or labor for something and then getting left out of the benefits of what we helped build and maintain. We already paid for the parks to be maintained and insured through our tax dollars, and we love celebrating and expanding our community's caring nature by getting together in Jawbone Park to freely and publicly care about our fellow community members. People having free and low-risk gatherings should not have to pay for insurance wise. The problem we are facing today is not all of us versus all of you. The problem we are talking about today is not all of you against all of us. People who are working to build a kind, helpful, and caring community are not problems to be pushed out and dismissed. The problem is this unfortunate discriminatory ordinance. I believe we all want a more caring, helpful, and kind community. This oversight and policy makes for unfair and unjust practices, and it can be adjusted before being ordained. We've been asking for adjustments for months because this doesn't only affect Really, Really Free Market gatherings. This current unfair one-size-fits-all approach creates poor outcomes for many of our everyday citizens who simply want to freely share with our fellow community members. We brought an example of an event insurance waiver that could be put in place or adjusted for BuckHannon's public parks. Christina's handing it out now. Thank you, Christina. I created this waiver document based on Abigail Wernick's research. Abigail is who spoke before me. Other towns and cities have waivers. We are asking that an event insurance waiver be added to the current framework for free and risk-averse gatherings. Requiring people to have to pay for additional insurance when we already pay with our tax dollars to insure these spaces to hold free public gatherings is unjust policy that impoverishes our communities by cultivating even larger wealth gaps. We'd love to get our ninth year of in-person gatherings underway in our beautiful Jawbone Park. Instead of unfairly excluding this kind of community engagement, BuckHannon's ordinance can include waivers for these types of low-risk and free community gatherings. Please look over this document and let us know if you have any questions. I'm also proposing that community members from different backgrounds and financial standing are at the table to figure out an inclusive ordinance for using these publicly-funded spaces. Specifically, having people from groups that have used these spaces over the years be part of the ordinance's creation will give valuable insight to how policy affects people. I can think of a bunch of organizations and groups off the top of my head that use the parks. Stockard Youth and Community Center and the theater. Deborah Dean Murphy and Jessica Scott, founders of Center for Resortive Justice on WVWC's campus, guide conversations amongst groups regularly and are willing to facilitate circle conversations to work on the language of the ordinance with city officials and community members from these groups. To summarize, we already pitched in with our tax dollars to insure these spaces. Free, public, and low-risk gatherings being treated the same as higher-risk and for-profit events is unjust policy. We propose a waiver system for low-risk and free gatherings, as well as city officials collaborating with affected people on the language of the ordinance. Thank you for sharing this time with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay. With anyone else before we close the time for a public comment, wish to address City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am. What is your name, please?
Eva George. First, I'm going to say I don't know Heather personally. I know that she has given devoted a lot of her personal time to the community in general. The Really, Really Free Market is just one of them. She helps in other ways, and now she's trying to help with the Really, Really Free Market. And you're imposing a mandatory insurance on her for having this. She's not making any money. She's still on it free of her own free will, and everybody that's there gives away whatever they have to whoever wants it. I've been there a couple times, and I kind of understand if it's a for-profit organization, but she's not. None of this, the Really, Really Free Market, is a for-profit. I want to know if the city has insurance on this property, the parks. You have three city parks. Do you have insurance on them?
Yes, we do. But...
Go ahead and say it. This is a public... This is a chance for you to make a comment.
Yes.
Okay. If you have insurance, then why does anybody have to have additional? Is Jawbone public or private?
It is public property.
Then if anybody, me or anybody else, would decide to have a party, a birthday party, a graduation party, any kind of a get-together on these parks, are they required to have insurance?
It would depend on the type of event that you would have. Earlier this year, there was a gentleman who turned 90 years old. He opened his invitation to anybody and everybody who wished to attend from the community. He needed... His group needed to obtain an event insurance policy to have his party there because it was an open invitation. It was a come-one, come-all to the event. The difference is, if you have a birthday party or a graduation party and you are controlling the who's coming by invitation only, event insurance is not required because you are controlling the environment, you know exactly who's coming. From an insurance standpoint, that makes a difference. So, when it's a come-one, come-all, it's open to anybody and everybody, and it's not double insurance. The city has insurance for the park. Our insurable... And just for clarification's sake, I am a licensed insurance professional. I have been that for 11 years, okay? So, when I say this, I'm coming to you from an insurance background. I know insurance, okay? So, it's not just me saying what I've read on the internet. We have an insurable interest in that park. We own the park. The city of BuckHannon owns the park. In order to have an insurable interest, you must own something or be inhabiting something, okay? So, we own the park, we have insurance to cover it. We are only covering the park as it sits right now. We are not covering individual events that take place in the park. That is what event insurance is for. So, it's not double insurance. If a group were to have an event open to the public in Jawbone Park or any public facility within the city limits, and they were to not carry their own insurance, and someone were to come to the event and trip and fall or become injured, regardless of the circumstances, the organizers of the event would become personally responsible, personally. That means paying out of your own pocket for medical bills. This is as much a protection for everybody that hosts an event or organizes an event as anything. This is standard operating procedure. The county commission requires this on any public property within the county. The Board of Education requires this at any school. If my friends and I wanted to go play basketball at a gym at the high school, we would have to obtain an event insurance policy, give it to the school system for us to be allowed to use the gym. So, what the City Council, what the Consolidated Public Works Board has done in creating the policy and what the City Council is going to memorialize through ordinance is not in any way, shape, or form discriminatory. Every organization in our community, nonprofit or for-profit, has to comply, everyone. So, when the Strawberry Festival takes place, which is a nonprofit organization, when the Strawberry Festival takes place at Jawbone Park, they have to obtain an insurance liability policy to get and name the city as an additional insurer. When the Barbecue Bash takes place at Jawbone Park, also another nonprofit organization, they have to obtain event insurance liability, and they have to name the city as an additional insurer. And Mrs. Light, Ms. Light, sorry, is here this evening. She is the executive director of the Barbecue Bash. Last year, and I say this because this is already out in public knowledge, someone came to the Barbecue Bash and unfortunately tripped and fell. They claimed negligence on the city and on the Barbecue Bash, but there were witnesses, and the trip and fall was of that person's own, just not paying attention. But guess what? An insurance policy paid out for that person's medical bills. If the Barbecue Bash had not had their own insurance policy, the leadership of the nonprofit group, the citizen-led nonprofit group that runs the Barbecue Bash, they would have had to have paid out of their own pockets for that lady's medical bills because the city's insurance is not first on to cover that kind of a failure. The city's insurance is secondary. The event insurance is always going to be primary. It would be the same as a gentleman who used to sit on the City Council and his business partner owned the building where Stone Tower Brews is. They have it insured on their end. They have a commercial liability and commercial property policy to cover the building. Stone Tower Brews, which rents the space, has to have its own liability and property policy because when someone walks in that door, they're not going to see the people that own the building, they're going to see the people who are running Stone Tower Brews. So, if somebody trips and falls at that doorway, or if someone gets... Because it's more than just trips and falls. It's also food poisoning, it's storm damage. If a tent were to blow over in Jawbone Park and hit a vehicle, it would be the responsibility of the event holder. So, we're not just talking about just trips and falls. It's much broader than that. But we'll use that for the example here. If someone were to trip and fall going in or out of Stone Tower Brews, it would be Stone Tower Brews' insurance, they would be responsible, not the property owner, because that's secondary. Theirs would be for if the building were to burn down or if the roof would blow off and damage the property next door. So, that's the parallel. It's the same kind of situation here. We are covering the park. If one of the pavilions were to blow over or get damaged in a storm and hurt, let's just say Pop's Furniture or Sweet Delicious, that's what our insurance is for. Our insurance... Or if a crack in the sidewalk in Jawbone Park were to... Our insurance, or if a crack in the sidewalk in Jawbone Park were to create a problem, that's what our insurance is for. The event insurance is to specifically cover the event. Does that make sense?
Yes, according to your explanation, it does. But I think in this case, there should be a way for it. And I thought Buckhannon was, is, supposed to be a friendly inviting town. To make her pay for that, or somebody pay for it, whether it be her or somebody pay for her, and the customers know that, does not make a very friendly or inviting city at all. Those people that can, whoever it might be, that come to the really, really free markets, they need something. And most of us have something that we can give away. Can't you waive that for this event? And how much would the insurance be?
So an event policy would be anywhere between $150 and $250.
For the insurance, for one event?
For one event.
So she has four a year, that's $1,000. And she doesn't make any profit off of this deal. That's not very friendly, not very inviting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did anybody else wish to address City Council this evening? All right, is there a motion to declare the recognized, yes, public comment section to be closed? Is the motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second? Second by Mr. Rigger, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, we are down to our department reports. Ethan?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. A lot has changed since the last report on the Lee Street Department. We began putting down blacktop on the basketball court at the city park today. The plan is, as long as the river was off, to put it down on the football court tomorrow. And then next week, the city is planning on putting the final wear-in layer on it. They've also been clearing the riverbank around North End, trying to get some debris out of the river, prevent it from getting into the streams. The waste department is expecting the delivery of two of their new garbage collection trucks. Sewer, the crews have completed the final pour on Island Avenue. They have a single manhole and about 50 feet of gravity name installed and tied into the forest name, that'll be it for that project on the sanitary sewer side. And they also began an upgrade on Lower Drive that will replace approximately 1,200 feet of clay line, seven manholes, and fix some sewer lines from given under properties that's been built over then. And we also completed an upgrade at Pittsburgh Pump Station, upgrading some of the electrical components in that leg station. It was outdated and starting to give us some issues. The water department, they began working on Island Avenue, they started cutting manline. They've made it not as far as they would like because with dry weather, the grounds became a little less forgiving, and they've had several leaks this week they've been fighting with for the last couple of weeks. And they continue to work on the lead and copper surveys required by the PSC. And finally, the engineering, the Tenerton Booster Station, the Patterson Pump and Solid Environmental, completed commissioning of the booster station. The water department is in the process of hooking up their SCADA system to that new booster station. The FEMA generator hazard mitigation grant number one, which is the emergency backup generators. An onsite meeting was scheduled for the contractor at the Public Safety Complex for that generator. And the contractor is currently in the process requiring the necessary materials to complete that project. And that anticipated length is two months. Gateway West Phase Two, final invoice for reimbursement was submitted on the 19th of July. Once the reimbursement is received, the project will be closed out and offered books. Charles gets a library remediation project, there's nothing to report. The WPDH transportation program on Morton Avenue, there's nothing to do. We are waiting for the project agreement from the DOH. And the CMH development along Pittsburgh Road, we have submitted the plans for water, sewer to the public health department and are waiting to get those back and we anticipate starting to do that in the spring. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Crosten?
What's the next debris pickup for the community?
I will have to check on that.
Because I know that I only have one this month, they did have one today, tomorrow.
No, I did not see anything in and out there related to the day when I was out there and I think it was, but I can find out.
It's, David, oh, the debris, I think it's posted on the website.
It's next week.
Uh, no, I haven't, I haven't checked it. You're talking about yard debris?
Yeah.
Okay.
A paper shred event has been finally scheduled by the Upstate County Solid Waste Authority. I believe, we won't post this on our social media and website, but I believe it is at the end of September. So that's, and that will be out of our Public Safety, or I'm sorry, out of our street garage side, 395 Monmouth Road. And the waste department is planning to, in late September, 1st of October, also have two Saturdays again where we open up the free brings to the transfer station. Anything else?
Ethan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go.
Ethan, have you familiarized yourself with the, I think we've got a grant award on Morton Avenue, sidewalk project? There's a grant application on Route 20 North going from the courthouse out toward Lowe's, is that correct?
Yeah, and out towards North End. That was the, it should be in the packet. It's the WPDH path. And that's what we're waiting for the project agreement for from the Division of Highways.
When you just reported about the final closeout of Gateway West Project, I was wondering whether we're going to the complete streets concept with the Route 20 North project. There'll be period lighting and welcome to Buckhannon banners like we have downtown all the way out to the floor.
I know the initial plan was to have lighting on that street, but I haven't seen any drawings, we haven't gotten the design yet. This is just for the notice of the award, I don't believe any money has been paid. And it'll be for the design. And then there's a second grant that goes into the actual construction of it.
Great, well, we have an opportunity to have input, is that further along in development?
I'm sure we can do that. Yeah.
That's true. All I wanted to know.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Ethan, the last bullet in the report talks about replacing the floor in the gym in St. Carter Youth. And they want to do it themselves, has that tiled, is it still tiled and has it been tested for asbestos?
Is that in my report?
It is, it's down in St. Carter Youth, yeah. That was discussed in the supervisor's meeting, and Ambi, anyone touch upon that? I can give a brief report.
I can just tell you a little bit about it, you probably already know. So there's been funds gathered for that floor, yes. It's asbestos, they have to encapsulate it, that's all being taken care of. They're all, they're planning all of that.
Who's doing your work?
They have not done it, they're taking out bids for this. They have to, they have to develop the RFP to distribute, and then we won't know until those are...
And then once it's removed, then they'll lay down the new floor.
It won't be removed, it'll be encapsulated.
So it's won't go over, that's fine.
It's the encapsulation, it's...
All right, that's my only question.
And as I mentioned, Jack, Jay Holland is involved in the bidding process and the engineering part of it, so Ethan, Jay would be involved as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right, up next is our finance director.
First of all, some housekeeping, this came in late, so if you'll put that passing down later. And the debris pickup board meeting is tomorrow, Dave? And then starting September every Friday after that.
Actually tomorrow.
There'll be one, yes, tomorrow.
You have to call in to City Hall if you put on the...
You can get on a regular list if you have it every time, or you can call and let us know.
Yeah, I mean, they'll have to let City Hall know so that they'll know what address to go to, right?
Yeah, I thought Dave was on the regular.
I think I'm on one.
Okay.
I'll give you your balances for the enterprise funds, July 1st, 2024. Waste collection, money market and checking, $1,795,000 with the CDs and savings, it's $318,000. And then we have to have that landfill letter of credit, $64,000. I might note that we are going to obtain two new garbage trucks that will be arriving very near future. So that'll drop that balance, that's it. Water board, money market and checking is $1,102,000, working capital and savings, $906,000. Sanitary board money market and checking, $897,000, and working capital and CDs at $463,000. Stormwater fund is at $196,000. The St. Carter Youth and Community Center reports enclosed with a list of attendees for each day of those activities. There were 26 days of activity and the average attendance for each day was 48. And that's the youth, not the staff. For participants in their programs, I should say. Camp Buccaneer summer program ended, and now next week they'll start their after-school programs. The Colonial Arts Center facilitated art classes that were taught by Crystal Brown for four weeks. The total attendees for all those classes were 25. The funds, there were funds contributed by St. Joe's and State Farm that went towards grants to some of the participants that needed that assistance. And then St. Joe's Hospital also contributed towards some live shows at the facility. And then just as a note, the Elvis impersonator, Robert Kiefer, will be performing there Sunday, February 15th at 2:00.
September.
That one, so?
September.
Oh. September 15th, thank you, at 2:00.
Peter Fong.
I'm being budget sanctioned by February, that's one thing, that's it.
Any questions for Ambi? Thank you. Police Chief Matt Gregory, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just a few things for council to do. Over the course of the last two weeks, Police Department has been going through its year-three web assessment with Kalia. It's been a very, very involved process. I'm still communicating with the assessor just as of this afternoon. We are waiting on their final report as we close out year three and advance into our final year of re-creditation cycle. The Police Department continues to accept applications for police officers. It's been an ongoing process. Over the course of the last few weeks, our deadline to receive applications is Friday, August 30th, 2024. Tomorrow, we will host RAs from Westminster College as we prepare for move-in weekend. This is an annual event where we meet with RAs and talk about rights, responsibilities, and general safety information. That meeting will take place with both the Police Department and the Fire Department at our community and training room at the Public Safety Complex. Some of our officers continue to undergo trainings, I've talked about this throughout the year, focusing on instructor-level type trainings, mainly in compliance with Kalia and its standards. The most recent training was field training officer training, which two of our officers just completed yesterday. Erica Bennett, I've talked about her at Link as well, she's our peer liaison. She continues to do good work. I do plan on having her come to a council meeting here in the next month to give a report about her activities. And then hopefully moving forward, have her come maybe at regular intervals every few months or so to give updates on all the work that she's doing in the community. Our PIPs program is approaching its 10-year anniversary this fall. As we continue to do so, we continue to see its ranks grow. We currently have three applications for new memberships. And getting ready to process those. Of course, we're always looking for new members for the PIPs organization. And finally, this is noted on the agenda under my name there, and that is just an update to council on the revisions to the Police Civil Service Rules and Regulations. This is something that is currently being forwarded to our Police Civil Service Commission, who will meet in September to not only review the applications that I just noted, but at the same meeting to consider the suggested revisions to the rules and regulations. A summary of those rules and regulations are included in your packets. In a nutshell, the revisions basically encompass updates to statutes and legislation, bringing it more into line with current laws and procedures specifically with Kalia standards. And there, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Crosten.
Mr. Sanders, if appropriate, I would be bringing that floor to the table, certainly, it doesn't have to stay for the next two hours.
Bring what?
F4 on the, I'm sorry.
It's not on, it's not on the agenda.
I saw Fire, Civil Service, and Police, something.
Yeah, that's been studied by the, okay.
Emily Littler, Saturday Night Live, just said, never mind.
Any questions or comments for Chief Gregory? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. O'Neill, can you hear us okay?
I can, if you can hear me likewise.
You can.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to join in long distance tonight. The primary thing to take up with you all is ordinance 470, which we can deal with later, but I also wanted to give you an update with respect to the walk trail survey. I've received the survey, at least the first part, for the bathroom building. So that is ready to proceed, and we will have that part of the exchange ready for you at the next meeting to close. We need to still iron out one or two things with the trail itself and how exactly that's going to be described. But that's something that Dale and I have been talking about over the last couple of days since we've gotten the first part back. And I'm confident that we'll have that worked out in time actually for the next meeting. So it's good news there, and it looks like we're proceeding to a close. So also, the second reading for the ordinance vacating those alleys will be in order at that time once that's prepared. So I'd be happy to take any questions on that or any other subjects that you have.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neill?
Okay.
We'll check back in here in just a moment.
I'll be here, thank you.
Okay. Under Correspondents and Information in your packet, you have a notice of accepting bids for the city fire department's breathing apparatus, a notice of accepting bids for paving services, also a notice of accepting application for street department laborer position. We have a FOIA request from the SBA Communication about applications for a new cellular tower. We have an order and notice of special election for the continuation of the Charles Gibson Public Library access levy. Note that it only says "special" because this does not happen every time that we have an election. It will be on the November ballot, so it will not be a separate election. And then you have also the Charles Gibson Libraries Director Report for August 2024. Do we need to separate the consent agenda? Okay. Under the consent agenda, um, I would add that you approve E1 and E3, um, and then we will break out, um, we'll, we'll break out the approval of the building and wiring permits. So is there a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could just note that we do not have the minutes.
Oh, that's right. I even marked it here.
Yeah, articles first.
So that's just the SYCC Joint Session Meeting 7/11. Thank you. I even marked it and read it right over. So we will approve the, ask that you approve the minutes of the special joint session with Stockard Youth and Community Center Board on 7/11, and then approve the, uh, payment of our bills, E1 and E3. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr. McCauley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Giuliani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously on E2, uh, the approval of our building and wiring permits. Is there a motion to approve those?
Sure.
Motion by McCauley, second by Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. That motion carries with the noting of Mr. Gregor's abstention. Okay. Down to strategic issues for discussion and or vote. We need to bring back Mrs. Jenkins here for, uh, discussion of F1, which is, and possibly, uh, Ethan. We could, we could, we could pitch in it, or we could just let Ethan do it, so.
She can come do it. I won't fight her for it.
This is the approval of an enterprise lease, uh, for a Street Department truck.
Yes, so this is for one of the mid-sized dump trucks, or not just dump trucks, but trucks in general, for the 550. The Street Department currently has a 2005 550 with a dump bed on it, and it's starting to have some issues, and it's on its last leg. So instead of buying a new truck with just a dump bed on it, we were looking at leasing options through Enterprise, which we already have the agreement through. And what would be different about this is it has a roll-off hook. So, long-term, we would like to reduce the number of vehicles in the fleet by using roll-off hook for different specialty beds. So instead of having a truck for a dump bed, um, flatbed, roll-off, it could all be one truck, and you can interchange the bed on it. The cost for this would be, the lease is $1,647 a month. There would be a down payment for 50% to install the hook on it for $18,500, but approximately $10,000 of that would be covered in the trade-in of the current 2005 550 truck. And long-term, we would like to move to get another one in the streets, maybe water and street, or sewer, waste departments, to increase the interchangeability of the departments and maybe reduce some of their number of vehicles.
Do we currently have the proper beds that can be interchanged?
No, we would have to buy some of the beds. I think we have the dump bed, but anything other than that, we would have to purchase the bed separately.
Are you, you have an idea what those are going to cost?
Law park, 15 to 20 for most of them.
15, 20,000?
If it's just a flatbed, less than that. If it's more specialized bed, maybe a little bit more.
And how long does it take to switch the beds, interchange the beds?
A minute.
Is that official?
Yeah, you can do it by yourself. A single person can do it.
How old's the one that we're getting rid of the scrap?
It's 2005.
20 years old in usage?
Yeah. Probably not the most loving usage, but for a truck.
We've, we've, we've seen success with the enterprise lease program in the past. I, I would encourage you to, um, move in this direction yet again. Is there a motion to approve Ethan's request and recommendation?
Sure.
A motion by Mr. McCauley. Is that your second, Mr. Sanders? Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you all.
Okay, uh, F2, we will bring Mr. O'Neil, if he can hear us, back to the, uh, table there. He's, he's coming right back to us. F2 is, uh, the approval of ordinance 470. This is the adoption, uh, from our policy into an ordinance regarding liability insurance for reserve use of city facilities for events open to the public. This would be on first reading. Mr. O'Neil, I will defer to you to walk us through, uh, the, uh, the copy that we have before us.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'll read the, um, ordinance by title, and then, uh, go through what the modifications are from the last draft that the council had before it. Council has before it ordinance number 470 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance requiring users of city property pursuant to the policies of the city, including the city's parks and Stockard Youth and Community Center, to secure liability insurance providing coverage for any events advertised or open to the public, providing for exemptions and setting an effective date. So there are a couple of, uh, changes here, uh, just to bring your attention. One, uh, in the whereas clauses, we added, uh, the, uh, the city's event center. The, the listing of, uh, the listing of city facilities that this applies to is not meant to be exhaustive, but, uh, but I agree, it's a, it's a good idea just to list kind of all the major facilities, but for the council's benefit, the benefit of the public, and the affairs mentioning that this, um, this ordinance will apply to all city property that is open for use by the public for events of, of this type, whether or not it is specifically listed. To the extent that there are listings, it's just to be illustrative of, uh, of some of the properties where, uh, where this is going to have the most applicability. And with respect to the substantive part of the ordinance, uh, the, the last draft that you had, would have required, uh, the insurance carriers to be admitted, uh, carriers in the state of West Virginia. Some feedback indicated that there are a number of companies that offer these policies that, while they are not technically admitted West Virginia carriers, which has a very specific, uh, legal, uh, definition, being authorized to do business in the state of West Virginia is the, is the updated language, and that broadens the availability of carriers who offer these kinds of, of policies. So that was, um, one change, uh, in particular. And then we mentioned, uh, there's been some discussion tonight about the, uh, the exemptions, uh, here. We've mentioned that, um, uh, we added a proviso on Section B of Article 2, mentioning that, um, even, even where it is, um, justified to offer an exemption to this policy for, as we've said, small, uh, private events like birthday parties, for instance, as, as an illustration. We mentioned that that, that ability to offer waiver is going to be circumscribed or limited, uh, a little bit, when even a private event, um, that is not open to the public could include the potential for risk of loss when, for instance, alcohol is being served at the event. But we should never, uh, suggest offering a waiver of the insurance requirement, no matter the nature of the event, when alcohol or other intoxicating substances, legal, legal intoxicating substances, uh, are present, uh, as part of the event. And then, uh, the effective dates, uh, changed, obviously, uh, since, uh, it was not, it's only the first read tonight, so we modified, uh, the effective date, uh, and, uh, some of the other details. So, so I'd be happy to take any questions, uh, from members of council. Again, uh, you know, this draft is, uh, should be reflective of, uh, your desires. There's no, uh, you know, pride of authorship here, so if there are, uh, other modifications to this draft that members of council would like to see, I'd be happy to accommodate those. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. O'Neil. Is it, is it okay to just list simply the theater rather than the Colonial Arts Center? The Event Center is actually the Event Center of Russian Forest. Are those things, uh, necessary to be proper?
No, no, because the operative language, again, those are whereas clauses. The purpose of those whereas clauses is really just to give a little bit of backstory for the, the reason that the ordinance is being enacted. It is not legally operative language. It just kind of expresses the will and understanding of the council. What, what matters, um, is, uh, in Article 1, Section A, "Whenever any individual group shall request the use of a city-owned property for an event under the individual's or group's direction, the event organizer shall," and then, and then it goes on. So the operative part of the ordinance makes it clear that this applies to any city-owned property that is made available for the rental by the public.
Another, my other question had to do with Article 1B. We're asking that, uh, I see it says, "Name the City of Buchanan as an additional insurer under the event policy." Okay, that's good. "The event, according to the shall tender to the city a certificate of insurance establishing the city's coverage."
Yes.
And, and that's correct.
Establishing the coverage that, proving that they have the coverage, establishing to us that they have.
Establishing the coverage, the, the city, the, the coverage of the city by their policy.
Yes.
Okay, alright. That's only questions I have.
I share your concern about the theater because the gallery at the CAC is part of the CAC, but it's not really the theater. The, uh, working student rooms in the basement is part of the CAC, not the theater. I, I get where you're coming from, including but not limited to, but I think, I think you've listed, with the exception of the Public Safety Complex's, um, community and training room, you've got all of the likely facilities covered specifically.
Well, agreed, and again, those, those lists are not meant to be, and they don't have any legal force to be exhaustive. They're just illustrative, and the, the legally effective language is there in subsection A. Use of a city-owned property. So whether it's list, whether it's mentioned somewhere in there or not, if it is a city-owned property, then this ordinance applies. The requirement is this ordinance applies to the use of that property.
Can I revisit with you the concern I expressed at the last meeting over the sponsorship of an organization that already has ongoing insurance sponsoring a sub-entity? Yeah, well, or, or Great Buchanan has a policy they can use the job of park upon getting approval by the Consolidated Public Works Board, 365 days a year. If, if an entity went to Great Buchanan, will you sign off as a co-sponsor? That could, that could be a helpful, but they've, they've done it before in Great Buchanan.
Right, and I, 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 oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
I, I, I see where you're going. What I, I think that this language accommodates that, because what it says in, in subsection A is that the organizers need to secure event liability insurance. It doesn't mean that they have to go and pay for it themselves. So if an organization wants to use, uh, you know, any other group's, uh, piggyback on their policy, that is permit, that is, that is permissible under the ordinance. What, all they would have to do is provide a certificate of insurance, naming the city as an additional insurer for that event.
Tom, is there not a comprehensive liability policy that would cover all activities within the city premises? The parks, the three parks, Stockard and so forth, for not-for-profit events? Now, when you utilize a facility for maybe once a year, or twice a year, or four times a year, is it not a way to bring, as Ann Warwick and Heather Snyder suggested, it would be a program that would allow other organizations? They don't have to be sponsored by a church or a Great Buchanan. But isn't there something out there that is innovative that would allow us to do something like that?
I, I can't speak to what kind of products in the insurance market are out there to cover something like this. I think, as the mayor mentioned, uh, earlier, that the, um, the, the city's policy does not cover all of the risks that, uh, arise from the use of city facilities for special events.
Who, who is the person that's in charge of our comprehensive liability policy? Is that, uh, is that, who is that?
Tom, Tom, can I take it?
Sure.
Okay, um, so in the state of West Virginia, there are, there are two options for liability insurance for municipalities. Um, that's it. And we have one of those. Uh, the, that is Travelers Insurance. It is purchased through Loud Insurance Agency, so they are our agent of record for our liability policy. The other is BRIM, which is owned by the state of West Virginia. BRIM is actually more restrictive, uh, than, than Travelers is, and it costs a lot more money. So Travelers is our insurance policy, and, and what you're asking is, the answer really is no. Because insurance requires entities purchasing it to have an insurable interest in what they're covering. There really is no such thing as just an all-encompassing blanket policy. It covers you no matter what. Uh, it, it's a bulletproof policy. It, it just doesn't work that way. Insurance is highly regulated. It's a highly regulated industry, and, um, it is, it is governed, and, and there are fair, uh, there are fair market, um, laws that apply to, uh, the, the process of underwriting insurance and purchasing insurance. So we, we have a very comprehensive, uh, liability, general liability policy. We cannot buy really a better liability policy. And, and again, within the state of West Virginia, uh, this, there are, there are but two companies that, that are approved to do business in the state of West Virginia that will serve municipalities.
I thought when Ann and Heather were making that presentation, they said that there are other municipalities that have a, some type of, uh, sponsorship or something that would cover that particular municipality. Did I misread what they said, or mishear what they said?
Well, those, those examples would have to be, um, those examples would have to be specifically laid out, and, and if, if they're not within the state of West Virginia, then they wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison.
I don't think that either one of them said there were cities that had policies. I think they said there were cities that gave waivers.
Right.
Yeah.
Waivers that they would have.
It'd be interesting to see how they could give a waiver with their comprehensive liability policy. I'd like to find out more information about that.
And Dave?
But I know where you're coming from. At Consolidated Public Works, yeah, what, in June, I think, June, perhaps. Jamie Al was here, our insurance agent, and he said, "The City of Buchanan will have this policy or, or ensure, it's being required by our insurance company." And, and that covers everything, if I understand it correctly. He made that statement.
I think he said we'd be at risk.
Yeah, he said he would not write a note, but he didn't say.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question, Mr. Snerre.
Sure.
Where are your insurance at for a little bit? As long as you're municipal, I guess. I think we are late to the table in adopting a policy such as this. I'm, I'm pretty sure Duncan and my old friends down there in Charleston and up in Morgantown, they've had, they've had this event requirement in place for many years. I don't know about Clarksburg Bridgeport. I didn't check with them, but I'm sure, I'm sure if you wanted to do something that's going to draw 100 or more folks, um, Morgantown, Charleston, Wheeling, I bet you Steve Williams in Huntington would tell you, "Yeah, we have a policy that's been implemented by a resolution or ordinance that requires this." Not Survey Delkens or Weston or cities around us, but I think the more progressive cities, this is something that they've actually required for a good number of years.
Yeah, and our city has had the policy in place for quite a while. This is just a, this is a, this is memorializing it into an ordinance. The policy was actually put into place, um, around... The policy was actually put into place around the time of COVID. Now, yes, we did, the Consolidated Public Works Board had from time to time allowed for there to be exceptions, but, and I will say this again, the reason for the hard stop on that is because of what we saw with an event that took place last summer. Because if we would have, if they wouldn't, again, I go back to this. This is as much a protective mechanism for those who want to produce events, sponsor events, as it is for, for anyone. The folks who, who put on the barbecue bash would have had to have paid for that claim out of their own pocket without the, without the liability insurance. So that was where it, that's, that's, so now it is, we, there are no more exceptions given. It is, it is, it's, we're following our policy.
Since day one in the partnership out of the Event Center project for, with the West Virginia Army National Guard, you know, City of Buchanan, my understanding, it put about $750,000 into that building. They have an agreement, they lease the Event Center side, but by mandate by the West Virginia Army National Guard, we cannot hold any events in there without that event organizer having this type of insurance. We'll be, we'll be in breach of contract with the state of West Virginia and the Western Army National Guard. Now, that's that one facility, but we can't, we have no legal standing in that facility because it's owned by the, you know, it's, it's under the direction of the Western Army National Guard. We operate by their lease, totally, so.
But one more observation, and I'll be quiet. The insurance industry is claims-driven when it comes to premiums. And sometimes you can't pay a premium high enough. They say, no, we're not going to cover you anymore. So if we, if we were to have, and we have had claims, not a deluge of claims, but we have claims all the time that are filed against the city. Somebody trips on the curb out in front of City Hall, I represent the city in a couple of those cases over the years. If we are the only entity with insurance, that's who the folks come after. They look for the deep pockets, and by deep pockets, it's not that Buchanan has gazillions of dollars, but we have a big pile of insurance protection. They would pursue that policy. And as a consequence of perhaps our insurance company paying out on a claim or two or three, our premium will go up substantially to the detriment of all of our citizenry because everybody shares in those expenses.
Right. And you, you are correct. Now, I will, I will note quickly that the, the first, the first coverages that would be hit, or first folks that would be hit, would be those event organizers. Anything supplemental will come to the city of Buchanan. You're absolutely correct.
If organizers cannot provide any kind of financial backing or would have to declare bankruptcy or?
Put their houses up for collateral, anything like that, then it would come to the city. And just, just, you know, I should have mentioned this earlier, as, yes, I am a licensed insurance professional, that's why I say it that way. I am not an agent. I am no longer an agent. I was, I was a producer and, and sold it for 11 years, but I maintain my licenses. I, I can't, I'm not an agent any longer, I think, as we all know. I just, I, so this has nothing to do with an opportunity for, for myself to, to make profit. I'm not, I'm not a producer of insurance at all any longer. So just, just throwing that out there. But I still, I still have a license if I should ever want to go back down that road. But yes, you, you are, you are correct. And, and to piggyback on that point earlier, if, if claims start rapidly accumulating on the city for these, for these, if we should start waiving the policy for, for events, we absolutely can become uninsurable. Frequency of claims is the number one piece that is looked at by underwriters for insurance renewability. And if we, if we strike out with one of our two carriers, and we are forced to go into BRIM, which is a, it's less coverage, it's more restrictive, and it costs more, and the reason it's there is for, it's kind of, you can't, you can't be really turned down per se by BRIM, but you can be, you can be charged heavily by BRIM if that's the only place that you can go. So that's, that, just to clarify, that we are in the private sector with Travelers as our liability insurance carrier.
Well, you know, before I was in this role as a city legislator the last eight years, I was the city attorney. And probably the three words that I always cautioned, going all the way back to 1983, city councils numbers against invoking something, it's arbitrary and capricious. As soon as you start a practice of, the council may, or the Consolidated Public Works Board may waive in their discretion, that is the definition of arbitrary and capricious. It's, it's, the same rule's got to apply to everybody. And that's, that's sort of, we can't be arbitrary on capricious legislative policy. I guess one suggestion I would just throw out there as a possibility for the future is how many organizations are out there, in fact, not using the proper word organizations, how many individuals come together, like the free market and so forth? Is there a possibility at some point in time in the future that we talk to our insurance company and say, we have groups of people that would like to use our city facilities occasionally, and they will put together a program where they're going to say what the intent is or what it's for, and can we have extra insurance for those individuals? And if we can, how much would it cost? Is it based on how many people are looking at it, how many people will come? But it's something that I think would be positive for the long term. I'll vote for this ordinance now, but I think it's, to me, it's not a done deal. I'm going to talk to James about some possibilities for the future.
Well, I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I don't think you want the insurance, right? I mean, you, you were offered on two occasions to have it paid for, but you didn't want to accept that. So that, so if the city provided it, you know, there would still be insurance policy that what Mr. Harms is saying, I believe, that we would.
I'm not, I may be understanding it differently, but I think Dave's saying that having the publicly funded insurance that we all already pay for in this room as our tax dollars would somehow cover, which is what, basically what we've been asking for anyways. But you're talking about somehow bulking it up to come to a compromise between what Robbie has explained, and I'm saying you because you're the one who's talking as somebody with experience from an, as an oven, as being an insurance agent at one point. So as Robbie has explained, in his words, things like what we do at the park aren't, we don't have enough coverage. And you're trying to figure out a way for the city's insurance that is publicly funded through tax dollars to be enough coverage for things like really, really free market. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah. So it's not quite what, I think we're hearing two slightly different things.
And I will just say this, I understand exactly the phrase you're using, publicly-funded insurance policy.
Yeah.
And we're using the insurance policy for exactly what it's issued for, the day-to-day operations of the city, not for special groups coming together, creating those hazards. We've gone through this with our insurance agent. Now, you can pitch your research against the insurance agent's research. You could pitch your research against the insurance companies, and maybe not agree with the insurance agent and his or her interpretation of what that policy does. You can pitch your interpretation against the insurance industry, and perhaps not agree with what the insurance industry says we must do. But at the end of the day, you know, you'll have to respect the fact, they're the ones issuing the policy, they're the ones writing the policy, and they're the ones writing the checks when a claim is, is ultimately issued. You know, you couldn't step in and say, I don't think you have to pay that claim because my interpretation is you don't have to pay the claim. I mean, is that fair?
Well, there's a, there's a big difference, though, between like, insurance agents saying something like, well, I don't recommend you institute a waiver program, and saying, we're not going to insure you if you institute a waiver program. Those are not the same thing.
And we clarified that.
Yeah.
Where we would get into our problems is if we have multiple claims. Then they would obviously have to prorate our premiums, and at some point say, you have one more claim and you're out. You're not going to continue to write checks.
I do hear you. We actually went to the circuit, the clerk office, and we looked at the last several decades. Abby, Ann and I went one day together, the three of us, and looked through the litigation case brought against the city, and there has been very few and far between. And there definitely has not been one from anybody who's been attending really, really free market. We keep the park footprint pretty much as is when we're there. And I use that soft language because, you know, I'm sure maybe like picnic tables aren't always exactly placed the same way from one day to the next at the public parks, but that's day-to-day normal too for the picnic tables that are already there to get kind of moved around by anybody that's there. So, but we're not changing the footprint. We're not serving alcohol, nobody's getting charged anything, so it really is a low-risk, risk averse, completely free gathering of just community members getting together and giving to each other. So it is, I'm going to use the word absurd, because I need to laugh a little bit about this right now.
And that's your interpretation, I respect that.
It's absurd, it's absurd to compare this to something like the barbecue bash. They're just so different. They're just so different. And so an inclusive policy would look like having your eyes wide open, I feel like, about that and saying, these are so different, and why don't we have a waiver in place for these types of gatherings? Like, not just really, really free market, but other similar things too, to encourage all the things that Abby spoke so eloquently about.
I think, you know, and, and you mentioned it in your, in your remarks, this isn't an us versus you thing.
Right.
I, I think all of us here understand the work that's being done, and that it is, it is noble in the community, and, and I think we all, I mean, we all appreciate it. And, you know, I, I've said this in a Consolidated Public Works Board meeting, I mean, if I didn't believe in what you're doing, I wouldn't have offered to help you pay for it as a, as a private citizen myself. But, I mean, here's the thing, you know, not, Jody's probably going to call me later and be like.
I am.
But, I mean, you know, the barbecue bash was established in, in, you know, 2012, 2013.
2015.
Okay. And so it had been claim-free until last year. We never know. That's the thing, we never know. We, we do not pay firefighters because of what they didn't do yesterday. Tonight, tomorrow, we don't know, there could be a disaster. October 5th, 2021, we had a massive fire down here on Main Street that threatened an awful lot, displaced people out of their homes, destroyed property, destroyed the, destroyed the footprint of our city, and, and we did not obviously know that was coming. October 4th was a, was a normal day. The morning of October 5th was a normal day, and then the fire broke out. So we don't pay, and I, and I use that as an example because in a lot of ways, the city's public safety resources are our, are another way that we share insurance. It is, it's a lot of ways our, our insurance policy for our citizens, because it's a protective measure. We don't know when, what is going to happen next. And we, we do not buy insurance because, you know, we've, we've gone 10 years claim-free at our homes and on our vehicles because I could leave here, any of us could leave here this evening, and we could be in a terrible car accident that could change the rest of our lives. We, we buy it for what could happen, and that's where, that's where we're coming from. And again, it is as much a protection, a protection for you and for all event organizers as anyone, because I would hate, and I think all of us would hate, for anyone of, anybody, anybody running any, any event, period, but anyone in your position running the really, really free market to have to figure out a way to pay for someone's claim because they came, and of no fault of their own, but they, they, something happened. Or let's just say, you know, like, there was a festival Fridays a few years ago where everybody was set up, and a rainstorm came through, a high gust of wind came through, and knocked two tents into three vehicles, damaged all three vehicles. Create Buchanan had to provide payment for those three vehicles because they were the ones responsible. Their insurance policy responded to that claim, to all three of those claims. Otherwise, they would have had to have paid them themselves because it wasn't a tent that we put up, it was a tent that they put up for, for, for the event. The same thing could, could happen, and that's, that's what we're getting at here. This is a protective measure for everyone. And I know, I, I know it's not popular, but, I mean, this is, this is, this is where we are in 2024. It is, it is the cost of doing business, and I know, before you say it, I know you're not a business, but it, we are, and, and, and your event, even though you don't look at it that way, is a commercial event because it's a come-one, come-all kind of an event, so it is the cost of doing business, unfortunately. Andrew, if you could please go to the microphone, please.
Sure. So. Thanks. So Dave Thomas has graciously offered to try to come up with a solution with the insurance agent, so, but it sounds like there's some pushback from that even immediately. So if, thank you, Dave, I just want to say thank you for that, by the way. If you were to come up with something viable with the insurance agent that would please everybody so that the existing insurance, if I'm understanding you correctly, the city's existing insurance would cover certain small and, and risk averse events, if you could come up with something like that, would you be willing to revisit this? I'm not sure what that would look like, but it sounds like we've got.
We had.
We had our insurance agent here.
Somebody who's willing to do some legwork on that, which is really cool.
So I can, I can tell you, Andrew, I mean, Mr. Thomas has not been part, as you know, of all of the Consolidated Public Works Board meetings that we have been, we've been talking about this since March. But I have met with our insurance agent because, again, although I know it, I'm not, I've been out of it for two years, so Jamie is in it every day. And I've asked these exact same questions, and there, it all goes back to, there has to be an insurable interest. And because we do not have an insurable interest in the events that take place because they are private events held on public property, we, we, there really isn't a mechanism moving forward for us to be able to insure those for you.
Is, may I also ask, so you keep saying there are only two agencies that will insure this?
Companies.
Companies, excuse me. What about WB Corp?
That's, that's, that's essentially Bram.
That's the same thing?
Yeah.
Because that's who Elkins uses.
Yeah, that's, that's Bram. They, it's, they've changed the name over the years, I know it as Bram.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We've, we, remember, we did open and close public comment. We, we do have this in front of us. Is there, are there any other council comments before we ask to take action on this, on the proposed ordinance, which was, which is a first reading? It is one of two readings of this ordinance. So are there any other comments or questions regarding ordinance 470? Okay. Is there a motion to approve as presented and as, by, by Mr. O'Neil, ordinance 470 of the city of Buchanan on first reading?
I'll preface this by saying, I've always lived my life being compassionate possible, but practical and necessary, and I will make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rager. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lights on opposed.
I abstain.
What's that, you abstain?
I abstain right now.
Okay.
Would you, would you mind to give a reason, Mr. Thomas? Is it a conflict of interest?
No, no, it's not a conflict of interest, but I, I got a few phone calls I want to make and, but as I said, I basically support this. It's two readings, right? Am I correct on that?
It's two readings, yes.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes, it's the first reading. But I want to do some research also.
That is a yes then, right?
Yes. I'll do some first.
Are those unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
It's payment?
Payment's not here. Okay, the ordinance 470 has passed by this council unanimously on first reading. Okay. All right. All right. F3, as we talked, we have the Airbnb issue that we have talked about over the past few months. I have a committee to present to you. Let me get those names up here real quick. Okay. These are the folks that I would propose that we appoint to the subcommittee to work on behalf of the city council and the planning commission, and also say maybe the zoning board of appeals. So those members would be as follows: Scott Randall, Megan Smith, Tom O'Neill, who I would like to chair as we previously discussed, Shawna Jones, Carolyn Blend, Diane Poach, and Dawn Nestor. That would be a committee of seven. I know we said five, but I, I think, as long as it's an odd number, I think, I think that would be good. All right, are those names for this subcommittee relative to the R1 discussion that we have had over the summer, are those acceptable to you?
Sure.
If so, would you please motion to approve that list?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Likes on opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. We have two positions, one on the planning commission and one on the Fire Civil Service Commission to fill. I would ask that you, we can do these by separate, if you'd like, or we can do both. We'll do both. First, for planning, I would like you to appoint Crystal Burnside Shaw as the, to fill the vacancy on planning commission, and then I would like you to appoint for the Fire Civil Service Commission, Cody Martin. Are those names acceptable to you? If so, would you please motion to approve?
With respect to Dr. Martin, is our political stuff okay?
Yes. I did, I did check on all that.
I would check with that.
Second.
As Mr. McCauley alluded to, that to take the politics out of potential hiring for police and fire, there are, there are voter registration components, male, female components that we have to follow with Fire and Police Civil Service Commission. So Dr. Martin is acceptable on both fronts. So would you, is, so we've got the motion and the second, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders, is it okay if I turn F5 over to you to bring to the table?
Sure. And I'll preface it by saying that I can explain this proposal, and then I will have to abstain from any other, other than answering questions, I won't be able to vote on this issue. The Wambsby Buchanan Host Committee LLC has several items left, souvenir items that we had in our gift shop, the committee had prepared for sale, they're dated. There are some various, I can show you what we're talking about, some various items that would work well in two instances for the city to have. We really have no capabilities of marketing them any further. We've had them in the event center in the past, but we've had like a water bottle with the logo on it, the keychains with the logo on it.
Okay.
You see the quantities of each listed in there, the medallion that was given to the participants and so forth, some acrylic plaque that are still left, this is beautiful. This was for the award part of the ceremony. Now, this is again at the event that we had last year with 3,000 competitors from 13 countries. We had polo shirts, we have t-shirts, and we have a, a lot of stadiums require clear bags now when you go into the event, so we have several clear bags with the City of Buchanan logo on it. And what the committee is proposing is that we would sell these items to the City of Buchanan, and the City of Buchanan could then either offer them for sale out in the lobby, front desk, or, as the mayor knows, we, we need items for groups to come into visit, school kids to come into visit. You know, we could use some of these. We have 135 of these. Keychains, we have, let's see, looks like almost 200 of those. So we can utilize these items as a goodwill ambassador type gifts, since this was a one-time event, wanted to remind you it was here, and then I went to Mark Rothstadt, Germany for the next competition. It'll go to, I believe, India next year. So this will be, become property of the city to use at the city's will. Some of these items, we have at cost, some at retail, because honestly, the Wambsby Buchanan Host Committee does need some more funding. As most of you know, we had a bus issue, a transportation issue, where the center of education was to provide transportation and housing and food and so forth. And I'm not going to get into those details, and I'm not going to cast any, any comments in that direction, but we did have to, when that fell through after the state takeover of the school system came in, we had to revert to commercial buses. So a ban that we had planned to transport to and from Pittsburgh, or from and back to Pittsburgh Airport was originally going to cost the committee $1,500. In most instances, it turned out costing us $10,000 to $15,000 because we had to be at the mercy of the commercial bus lines. So we're still doing fundraising, and we're still, you know, doing some, some events and so forth. So if you look at the sheets in the package, you'll see the number of items, and you'll see that the cost does come out of $10,415.10. So the request from the Wambsby Host Committee is to have city council approve the purchase of these items that would then become city property to do at the will of the city.
How much again?
$10,415.10.
Do I make a motion that we purchase the remaining Wambsby?
Is there a second?
I'll say that.
Any further discussion? I would note that typically per year, we spend slightly less or so than this amount for a lot less merchandise. So, and we, because we do give a lot of tours, we do have a lot of kids that come through here, we participate in career days at the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, we're going to the Bobcat Fair, we give away a lot of things to our, to just people around our community, mostly our youth. So it would be nice to have, to give them something that, you know, did take place here as a, as a souvenir versus just, you know, whatever we can find, you know, on the internet. So that's, that's the only point I will make. So we have a motion and a second.
Could we consider birching the Strawberry Festival, that when they open their shop?
The gift shop?
Maybe, maybe they could, what do they call, you call that, somebody else...
I would, I would probably caution against it only because they'll have their own souvenir items to sell that they've purchased and invested in, and then third they'll go. Honestly, I think the best option would be in our lobby. If people come in, you know, and wanted to get something...
Strawberry Festival time might be a good time to...
I mean, you can certainly take it to their board, but...
Along with the Barbecue Bash, right?
Yeah, we'll sell you some t-shirts from last year.
There you go, you'd like some.
Yeah, in the nears, we'll be led to.
I know other things too. I remember our daughter was in, I think it was all, all conference for all state chorus and band in the middle school that was held at Wesleyan, but it could be an opportunity to, I think, two or three days over a year, and I think that's here regularly.
Right.
An avenue like that, they would tie in.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on, motion carries.
And I did abstain.
And Mr. Sanders abstains. Okay. We are down to council comments and announcements, and we are without Mrs. Buckland this evening, but we will begin over here with Mr. McCauley.
I've got nothing here tonight.
Say it ain't so.
All right. Hear this, council members. Mr. Rager?
I'm going to start a trend, I have nothing to say.
All right. I like it. Mr. Thomas?
Y'all had a rare weekend.
Okay. All right.
I was sitting down for that.
Wait a minute, I got something.
Mr. Zulliani?
I was thinking of saying the same thing, but I just, I'll ask a question. I was curious, how much did the two new garbage trucks cost? Can I ask that question?
Sure.
I'm curious. I think it comes to 300, right?
Yeah. Yeah. That would come out of waysport.
Right, no, no, I just, when they said I'd have to ask... They raise no money, they have to pay...
I'm just curious, how much did the garbage truck cost?
Right. $150,000 each.
That's a skill compared to a fire truck, which is in the millions, so, yep.
That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing.
All right. At 8:41, I hope everybody has a great weekend. Thank you all very much for the meeting, and I would entertain a motion that we...